Sin. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the flag of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Brinkner-Hart.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll try and make this one quick because, all right, today is Tuesday, Tuesday, June 5th, to be exact, but when one thinks of the days of the week, well, Tuesday, it really is a random day of the week. Think about it. All the other days have something going for it, or at least are known for something, but not Tuesday. Mondays is the start of the week. Wednesdays is the middle of the week, hump day, the day when you can start looking forward to things to come. Thursday, at least for some, is the start of the weekend, and only one day until Friday. And Friday is the day before the weekend, TGIF. Saturday and Sunday, the weekend, nothing else to say here, but back to Tuesday. Tuesday is a toss-up. It can be anything or nothing at all, but Tuesday, in her case, Tuesday is City Council Day, so let's get to work.
Thank you for that, Mr. Harding.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for being here today, and as a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Items six and seven relate to the same project and can be considered together for the legacy replat 21 located at 16901 Wright Plaza. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for legacy replat 21. Item seven, a resolution to approve the final plat for legacy replat 21.
Public hearing and agenda items number six and seven are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10-909 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100, here on behalf of the applicant. Before we use a minor plat for a project roughly located at 170th and Elm Plaza, just go through the project a little bit. This has been sitting for quite some time, as developers have been trying to kind of figure out how they want to move forward. Get your bearings here. We've got 168th Street Center is at the top, and the location here is in yellow. This is a mixed-use multi-story building you may be familiar with. It's blue is roughly right here for you sushi fans, and then the blad is just to the south of it, so it gives you an idea of where that's located. It is a minor plat, splitting off just a lot for this new building. This will be, it's a two-lot plat, and it's just to create this lot for this building. They'll be in two separate ownership groups. It's a four-story building. The first floor will be a garage for extra parking, and then you've got three floors of apartments above it. There's 36 toll units within this project at this location, so I'll show you the site plan. This parking lot is existing here today, just not enough parking for the reason for the additional parking garage, there's not enough room for any additional retail, unfortunately. Again, can give you an idea, this is that existing building. It is a mixed-use building. There's 33 units of existing apartments in that, in that building, as well as 12,000 square feet of retail. And so, this is an idea of what that building will look like, so pretty much a sister or brother to the building adjacent to it. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six and seven are approved, six to zero. Item eight, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Everett Place located northwest of 192nd Street in Grayfond Plaza. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and agenda item number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Afternoon again. Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10-909 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a preliminary plat, four-lot preliminary plat in front of you today. Little bit of background on this project. I've been involved in this project since fall of 2016, when we came forward with a project on this property here, the Nicely property, that evolved into a much larger project when the church got involved with the Everett property, and then the other two property owners involved was the Beller property, as well as the Daly property. We've had multiple meetings over the last, certainly in the last 12 months, not only with staff, but with users, as well as property owners. As things evolve in every kind of project, particularly in this one, with a lot of moving parts, users drop out, property owners drop out, and so we've come to this point where we've submitted this to you today for your consideration. We had a neighborhood meeting back in February, went with the Fire Ridge Neighborhood adjacent to our project, as well as invited the other property owners at this location. Four or five property owners showed up. The main concern was some landscaping, some buffer yard along that side, but no real issues. So, this plat, even though it's just a preliminary plat, the zoning and any overlay districts is being held back at this time. The proposed uses, this is the applicant, the Greek Orthodox Church here, some multifamily, a civic youth and daycare, and then an assisted living facility at this location, all within appropriate zoning. The main concern why this has taken a little bit of time to get, come forward is some access off of 192nd Street, and how that was going to work with our project. So, as I'm sure you're all aware, we have a very large project to the north, and the Avenue One and Fountain West and East project with both respective groups. The timeframe of 192nd Street has been pushed up, to our knowledge, and so we've been working with Public Works and planning on how exactly we're going to access this site. That called into play, we were proposing a right-in, right-out, this location as the sole entrance into the facility until the time that 192nd Street was improved, because there is a three-lane section through there, so you could get a left-in. Because of the size of this improvement and the fact that this median carries all the way down, this as a sole entrance into the project is just not acceptable. With Public Works, we can't taper back to get in and out. So, we have been efforting two options. One is working with the Nicely's to get access to Leavenworth and bring Leavenworth through some way, shape, or form that then fits both parties, or working with the Avenue One folks to the north on a Harney Street option. At this time, we're still efforting those options. One of them will be viable and will allow us to move forward with this project. This was approved unanimously by Planning Board in April, so since Planning Board, and in case you looked at that testimony there, we've re-engaged with the Nicely's on that Leavenworth access. We've engaged with Avenue One and Mr. Hofer on the Harney Street access, and we continue to discuss options with both the Beller and the Daly property. And then we'll continue to work through that. So, there's a lot of moving parts in this project. I fully expect to bring back probably a revised preliminary plat with our final plat here in the next several months, so this probably will change in terms of what this looks like a little bit, but I don't think materially enough to be that concerned over. The uses will probably stay the same. And this is a preliminary plat, so we do have to come back with that final plat, as well as the zoning has to go forward with it as well. We're under conditional approval. We've met all those conditions, continue to work with staff, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve item eight, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, six to zero. Item nine, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for Pacific Springs Vista to allow for the construction of a restaurant on Lot One of the development located northwest of 168th and Pacific Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and agenda item number nine is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Tony McCannney Senior with La Casa F Pizza.
Joe Dellos with Thompson, Dresen, and Dorner.
I'm Tony McCannney Junior of La Casa Pita, 8216 Grover.
Who makes the presentate, or is there going to be a presentation? Having any questions? Are you just here to answer any questions we might have?
Here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
We're waiting to get a building permit, and once that happens, we'll put a shovel into the ground.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve item nine, there are no lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, six to zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item 10, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for Sterling Ridge to allow for the construction of an apartment complex in addition to modifying language in the mixed-use district, mixed-use agreement regarding the future Tri-Faith Center. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and agenda item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, council members, and Dr. Thompson, welcome to back to City Council. Are you following this project around still? Thank you. I have with me here today Mary Lucas from Trammell Crow in Chicago, which is the ultimate developer of the project. This is an age-restricted housing project, and it's going to be constructed in Sterling Ridge, and the major part of the amendment that's before you today is removal of what was called a tri-faith restriction on commercial development on three of the lots within the subdivision, and there was a condition imposed at the time that the mixed-use development agreement was entered into, that until such time as the three churches and the tri-faith center that are part of the project were constructed, that there was a restriction on these lots. And as I'm sure you've read in the paper, two of the churches are now complete, the third is well underway, and the tri-faith center is due to start this fall, which is pretty exciting. There's also a major landscaping and bridge project that's going on within the tri-faith area that's going to be really a great amenity to the, not only to Sterling Ridge, but the surrounding neighborhoods. It's going to create a great deal of walkability along the creek area that's there and connectivity, additional connectivity between the residential and the commercial areas. So, with that, I'm here to answer any questions. We did receive recommendation from Planning Board for approval of the amendment.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve item 10, there are no lights. Roll call.
Fest.
And 11, I'm sorry, 10 and 11. Is it 10 and 11? I thought it was just 10.
It's just 10.
Just 10.
Yep. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item 11, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district, the property located at 20324 Veterans Drive. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and agenda item number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Joe Dellos with Thompson, Dresen, and Dorner, 10836 Old Mill Road. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve item 11, no lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, six to zero. Item 12, an application to consider a class A liquor license for Shakar and Onis LLC, doing business as Noah's Omaha, located at 17121 Marcy Street. A's Communication Opposition.
Public hearing and agenda item number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
The public hearing was already held.
Oh, the public was already held, all right. Any questions? Oh, you got a light on, Mr. Harding?
I'm a little slow today.
There you go. Now you got you, Mr. Harding.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Eric, when, if you could come up? So, last we considered this action, you were asked to not only provide an operating statement, which I think you've now done to the Correx Office, and then meet with some of the neighbors or talk with some of the neighbors. I was wondering if you could bring me up to date, or on the record, bring us up to date as to where you are in those regards.
Yeah, I reached out with the two people that had concerns that were emailed to us and also the council, Ms. Harris, who I've spent a good amount of time over the last four or five days, working really close with her to make sure that noise at the venue will not be an ongoing problem for her as it has been in the past. We, I got to know her over the phone. I haven't met her in person. I think she's here today, but I don't know who she is. But, you know, she, we failed her six, eight months ago with, with noise is when it really started, and I apologized a tremendous amount about, about that, and have worked very closely with her to, over the weekend at some of the events, to, to measure noise, to make sure that our new moving forward of our standing operating procedures of our staff member and also our security, that we'll do perimeter checks on the hour during an event to measure noise, to make sure that, that it never becomes a problem for her and her husband and the rest of the residents that live close by our building. We've instituted new policies, and we actually started these policies a couple of months ago, where we, we force the, well, I shouldn't say force, we require the DJs that will be coming to the venue for a wedding to do a pre-walk with the staff, so that they can be very clear on the expectations that we have of keeping noise down, that, that it's a wedding, it's not a, it's not a concert. And so, not only for the, the safety of, not the safety, but the enjoyment of the neighbors, but, but for the safety of the people in the room. I mean, there's, there's times where I've walked into, you know, one of our venues that's not by a resident, and it's just, it's way too loud, because the DJ just, I don't know if they're trying to get in a war or what, but, you know, they're trying to make everyone happy in the room, too, but, so that's the conversations that I've had with Ms. Harris, and I'm, you know, very dedicated, just like I said last time, to making sure that, that the neighbors, you know, that they're taken care of, and that we are good neighbors to them as well. I spoke to the other woman, Mrs. Pearson, two days ago on the phone. We spent about 20 minutes talking about why a license helps us control some of her concerns. One of the things that she mentioned was that she, you know, she felt like we were one of the, the many things that were, were being asked of their community of, of change. And she, she, about 15 minutes in the conversation said, "You're probably just getting roped into a lot of the frustrations we are as, as a residents of, of our, of our neighborhood," because there is a church that's being asked to be zoned, and there's a driving rings that's being asked to be changed, and, and then it just raises concern, because they once had a very off-the-beat community, that there's a lot of development going on around. And so, they just want to make sure that we are cautious and concerned with their safety and their well-being, as, as we should be. So, those are the conversations that I've had.
Okay. Thank you. And I know we, the public hearing was held when, when we originally considered this, but I don't think Ms. Harris was able to be here that day, so I'd like to ask her to come up and, and address the body. Glad we can flip face to voice now.
And thank you for extending the hearing. My name is Jereen Harris. This is my husband, Bob Harris. We live at, at Banyan Hill subdivision at 17110 Pierce Street, right across, well, cat a corner from Noah's Event Center. And first of all, my background is in music. I'm a big band singer. My husband's a musician, and I also have background in audio engineering and, and a degree in, in that. So, I'm very familiar with event centers and all kinds of venues, and also sounds and, and just, you know, what comes of all that. And first of all, I want to say that what Noah's Event Center is doing is wonderful. It's a wonderful facility, and, and, and Bob and I are just recently married, too. A little later in life, we had a 35-year breakup. But the thing is, we love weddings. And so, with all that in mind, I, we have an open mind, but we also love our peace and quiet, and that's why I wrote you for the May 22nd meeting, and I had something I had to be to, or I would have been here. So, I did write what my objections were, and what my husband's objections were, and it basically was because the bass was just coming right through the house. And, oh, boy, that's the one thing, it's just so intolerable. I could take the whole band. I, the traffic is, of course, heavy on Pacific Street. All that, you know, happens. We have good windows, so that's, that's a real value right there. But I'd have to almost walk to a part of the house not to hear it. It's not like being at the concert itself, but it's just there, and I think it's harder for us as musicians, but, but it, it really is hard to listen to something like that. And so, I did object, and with that in mind, with the noise already happening, it kind of scared us to think of a liquor license on top of that, because there are all these darling little children in our neighborhood as well, so there's seniors and, and children, and, and we know what can happen with that, too, so we were afraid of that. My husband also noted that before I came along, that was designated as an office park, or maybe not a park per se, but for zoning, and I don't know, and neither does he know exactly when it was designated for mixed use or whatever. So, when Noah's came about, I have to admit, my first thought was, wow, that's kind of neat, you know? And then all of a sudden, the bass notes start playing, and, and I couldn't get anybody's attention. I wrote someone, I started taking notes. I asked the neighbors if it bothered them, tried to do all the right things, and then I thought, well, if this gets bad enough, I'll just do a petition. And never got around to that, because I, it just, you get tired of fighting things all the time, you know? But the peace is so important to us, it really is. So, now, getting, oh, and the other thing is, we didn't realize liquor was already being served at Noah's. So, in comes Eric into our lives, and he contacted us, and I have to hand it to him to go to such extraordinary measures to, you know, to first of all, educate us on what's going on, what he has done to try to rectify the problem, and I thought, yeah, that's, and it did sound pretty good. But he followed, he followed up, and he, he was true to his word, at least so far, and we went back and forth over the weekend, just trying to figure out what the decibels were and what was happening. He also changed out his staff, and he put other measures in to try to work with us, which is really very nice, because that doesn't happen very often. And I am very hopeful, I know we're very hopeful, that we can continue this communication until they can establish, you know, just exactly what's tolerable, what isn't. Another thing, he pointed out that they should not be bringing the party out into the parking lot, because of course, that's just unreal, and things of that measure, but the decibels being an important part of this whole thing. The only thing that could go wrong is if people change and/or just refuse to follow whatever standards he has incorporated. He gave me the policies today on what he's trying to do. I'm, I think we're both willing to kind of see how this goes. He also redefined what, and, and explained why BYOB versus Class 1 liquor license was not, well, that the Class 1 liquor license was a, a way for them to control, you know, what's served and who brings what, I mean, they don't bring anything in, but the point is the, the drinking and so forth. I'm still concerned, just for the record, I am concerned for the future, but I really feel like I can work with Eric, and he is a family member, it's a family business. I think that's real important, and he was, he was, I really admire you for that, and I hope we can work together and, and continue to do this. At the same time, I don't want to be, and I'm, and I don't want to be somebody that just complains about anything. I'm sure most people don't want to do that, but it would be nice if we could work together. But I stand on record as saying, my original objections were that we already had the ongoing issues with the noise, and we're working on that. That adding and allowing liquor on the premises would only exacerbate the problems for which we are already forced to endure, making the situation far worse. Well, I think we can work together. And most importantly, that it is a family-friendly neighborhood with young children, having party-goers driving around. I mean, that could conceivably be a problem, because we even have problems driving in and out. There's children just running all over the place, and we take that very seriously. I have one other point I wanted to make. I just, I just want to make sure that we don't have to endure the, the noise anymore, and I think Eric and Bob and I can work that out. Oh, I do have, just, this is hindsight, you can't do anything about it, at least at this moment, but I do wonder why, for future places that you might be considering for permits or what have you, licenses. I don't understand, honestly, logically speaking, why anyone would want to build next to a residential area, because it's just going to be constant issues, you know? If you want to really have like an event center where you can, you know, relax and just do what you need to do, you know what I'm saying, as far as music especially? And I, I wonder where that kind of fell through, because it seems like we have to work twice as hard to make this work. I would think there'd be a million other places you could possibly put, you know, something like that, so that it doesn't create a, a problem between a residential area and the other. And especially when people, when they buy their homes, they buy them for reasons. They buy them, you know, for schools, for, for peace of mind, and quiet, and this kind of thing, and then all of a sudden, all these, and you're assured of a certain, you know, zoning, and then all of a sudden, things change along the way, and I'm sure it happens every day. But it would just, life would be so much easier if you really thought about that before, you know, you try to match these two entities, which I think are, don't necessarily match. We are just lucky that, because of Eric's efforts, too, that we could talk this out. But I do want to go on record as saying that I just hate the noise that emanates from anything like that, you know? Mostly the bass.
Okay.
My husband, Bob.
There is also a retirement community adjacent to Pacific Springs, not far from Noah's, perhaps five blocks to the west, and these folks, I'm sure, are not terribly happy. You've had a car pull up beside you with full bass going, which almost knocks you in another lane. It, when it comes into the home, it virtually permeates everything. Even if you've got gray windows, they vibrate, and that's the problem, is the vibration of the bass notes. If that's controlled, I think we can, we can live with the music. We can even live with the, if they get outside and get a little noisy, as far as the conversation is concerned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for working with, for working with Eric, and Eric for working with you, too. I don't know if there are any other neighbors that showed up today, but if there are any, if they want to raise their hand, I'll acknowledge them. But again, thank you for, for both of you getting together. I think that was time well spent in the way over.
Is, am I wrong? I've been there 14 years. And this section was set up to be office space, period.
Well, I'll defer to the gentleman behind me, maybe. But I think it was, when it was zoned as mixed use, the, what Eric's business is, is an allowable use within that, within that mixed-use zone.
Right. Okay. Well, it was just a point of confusion on my part, but I assumed it was going to just be office space and not heavy entertainment. All we need is more bars in this town. My gosh. So we're more, we're also concerned about the kids, as she mentioned.
Sure.
Because there's a lot of, anyhow, thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you for your time.
Hopefully, there'll be more ballrooms, so we can play.
Thank you.
Appreciate you cooperation.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Moving second to approve item 12. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item, or item 12 is approved, six to zero. Item 13, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Akshaya LLC, doing business as Maharaja Indian Cuisine, located at 617 North 114th Street.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 13 is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Sethu Tangamutu. I'm one of the partners of the restaurant. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving second to approve item 13. There are no lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item 14, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Casey's Retail Company, doing business as Casey's General Store, located at 9905 Q Street.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 13, 14, I'm sorry, is today. Proponents, please.
Michelle Kreitz with Casey's General Stores.
I'm so sorry. I didn't know I was supposed to bring any. It's Justin's fault. And that's Justin Stokes. He's the area supervisor for the location. So we're here to answer any questions. And we'll remember pizza next time.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving second to approve item 14. There are no lights. There's also no pizza. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item 15, an application to consider a Class A liquor license for Resinia LLC, doing business as Resinia Sushi, located at 2814 South 118th Street. Is communication from the chief building inspector.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 15 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, appearing today on behalf of the applicant. We were, are aware of the fence permit requirement, and will certainly abide by that prior to construction.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Subject to the permits? Second. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15 is approved, six to zero. Item 16, an application for Burrito Envy and Tequila Bar LLC, doing business as Burrito Envy and Tequila Bar, located at 6113 Maple Street, to their Class C liquor license to add an area approximately 22 feet by 64 feet to the east, including a walk-in cooler in the basement, approximately 7 feet by 10 feet.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Ave., here on behalf of the applicant. This is in addition to existing business that's been open since 2015. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any?
Oppone.
I have one.
Oh, opponent, okay. I'm getting to you now. Are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Please come to the microphone, your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Jim Bastard at 2543 North 1st. I lived in my house for 32 years. I look up today on the internet, and there are 18 liquor licenses within five blocks of that bar, I mean, the restaurant. How many liquor licenses do we need in one neighborhood? I cannot have my windows open at night. My car's been hit two or three times, or three times, my car's been hit. I go outside at least two times a week, and there are beer cans, beer balls in my yard. People fight, and people yell, and the police won't do nothing. I don't think we need any more liquor license in Benson until we figure out what to do with the parking. I speak to you once last year, and your idea was let the employees park in the neighborhood, and let the drinkers stay on Maple Street. Well, now I have employees parking in the neighborhood for seven, eight hours a day. And I'm one of the few houses in Benson that does not have a driveway to park my car in. So if I leave at night, I have to park two or three blocks from my house to walk, you know, home. I do have an alley, but the city don't keep it up no more. And there's no lights in the alley. So if I want to use the alley, it's up to me to pile the alley 200 feet, so I can park in my backyard. And that 200 feet, when I'm on disability, is a lot of money. And I've been fighting the city for over a year now to have an easement in my front yard. And I've been told, no, you can't do that. I can't have a parking permit in my front yard because I have an alley. But the waiting room, I have an alley and a parking lot, and they have three parking places in front of that bar. So I think, right now, we need to sit back and figure out what we're going to do about the parking in Benson, before we talk about, you know, do we need more than 18 liquor licenses in Benson? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Well, I would agree that parking is a challenge in Benson, because we've been so successful there with so many new businesses. And in my view, that's a good problem to have, but one that we need to pay attention to and work on. And I think there are some things in the works along those lines in the downtown area, including a structure that's available for parking that nobody seems to want to use. But that's something we continue to work with Business Improvement District on, and local business owners in the surrounding neighborhood, too. Mr. Kelly, as to this license, though, if you would. So this is an existing, existing business right on the main street of Maple Street, right?
That's correct.
And it's been there for a long period of time? No complaints, no issues?
No violations.
And what this does, it's an expansion downstairs? What else does it do?
So there will be a cooler that's just for storage downstairs. But the immediate bay adjacent to it will provide additional dining area. So it's not a new license at all. It's simply an addition to the current license.
Where they'll be serving the food and everything else they currently do.
That's correct.
And so it's a bay just to the east.
It's, I believe so. Yes.
So I don't see that as a problem. And they've been a responsible business owner and a good addition to the main street there. So I'm supportive of this, as we continue to work on greater issues of parking and the success we've had there in the area. And I will close, though, by saying, I've been watching your daughter, too, and I want to compliment her on how well behaved she's been this whole time, wading through the hearing.
My grandson.
Your grandson, I'm sorry. Well, he's been very well behaved. I couldn't see her on the podium there, but he was, he's doing a great job. So thanks for being here.
Can I say one more thing?
I'll give you one more chance, yeah.
I have been living in the house for 32 years.
You come up to the microphone for me, please.
I have been living in the house for 32 years. I should have some right, too. I should be able to come home at night and be able to park in front of my house. I should be able to, you know, have people over to my house. And right now, I invite every one of you to come down to Benson on a Friday night or Saturday night, come to my house, park, and then come to see me. You know, you don't end up parking two or three blocks away. And I don't think, you know, this is a neighborhood. It ain't the old market. I mean, people jaywalking all the time, people outside yelling, people, you know, you call the police, and all you get is, well, we'll be there in two hours. You know, you ask the cop to write people tickets, and all they do is say, well, this ain't our job. We're too busy writing tickets for people parking in a handicap, people parking in front of the, you call the parking enforcement, well, we'll be happy to come out before 5:00. You know, and it's like, you know, people in the neighborhood should have right, too. And until they figure out what they're going to do about parking, because they want to bring more people into Benson, they should figure out what they're going to do about the parking in Benson. You know?
Okay. Thank you. Motion approved.
Moving second to approve item 16. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, six to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Take 17 off, off consent. We'll take 17 off consent. The public hearing on agenda items numbers 17 through 19 were held on May 22, 2018. We're going to take item number 17 off of consent. Is there a motion?
18 and 19.
Moving second to approve 18 and 19. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 18 and 19 are approved, six to zero. Item 17, an ordinance authorizing issuance of purchase order to Abe's Trash Service for rubbish container service at various street maintenance facilities to be effective through December 31, 2019, with two one-year extensions at the sole option of the city.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Um, any discussion? Nope. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Pass.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Jerem.
Pass.
Councilmember Jerem passed due to a potential conflict of interest. Item 17 is approved, five to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 20 through 41 are today. If you wish to address the council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving second to approve items 20 through 41. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 20 through 41 are approved, six to zero. Item 42, a resolution to approve the Urban Chiral Condominiums Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan, located at 714 South 15th Street, in amount up to $348,436.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 42 is today. Proponents, please.
... rehab of a historic building that was built in 1910. Just to kind of give you some, a little bit of a perspective. So this is South 16th Street. This is Leavenworth. And then this is South 15th Street. So I know this is zoomed out quite a bit, but this blue shaded area represents the location of the site, which is 714 South 15th. Here is another perspective aerial. So this is the building right here, again, South 15th, Leavenworth. Closer view. The building, I believe, its historic name is, it says Lackawanna Leather Company. It's a little covered by the green growing on the building. And then this is just another view of that same building. So it was placed on the National Register of Historic Places Registry in 2007. Again, it's a comprehensive rehab of this two-story building. The owner, who is right behind me, she plans to take and convert this into three condominiums, two residential condominiums up above, and then commercial condominiums below. And the condominiums below may be turned into commercial spaces, maybe office, maybe some retail, but likely some office spaces, I believe, maybe on the ground floor level. There will be some public improvements associated with this project, curb gutters, sidewalks, a little bit of landscaping, and then alley improvements. As you can see, this alley is in need of some, some work. So the TIF will help with that. The total project cost and investment of this project is 3.5 million, and the TIF that is requested is $348,436. The project does comply with the Nebraska Community Development Law and our guidelines, and has TIF and planning board approval. With that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you, Ms. Hadley. Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard? Are there any opponents?
Hello, councilman. My name's Mark Bondrowsik, 211 South 37th Street. I'd just like to ask, is it appropriate to ask the owner a question about the?
You have to address your questions to the council?
I'd just be interested to know if the owner of the building would still be proceeding with the renovations and the plans for development without the tax increment financing at all. And that's all I'd like to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hadley, I believe you didn't mention the but for.
No. So one thing I can say is, when I started with this project back, when I started with the TIF program back in 2009, 2010, this project was presented. And at that time, we were going through the Great Recession, 2008, 2009. So to touch on that answer, I would say she would not be, because she has been holding on to this building, trying to do something with it, and has been struggling. And TIF was proposed then, and TIF is still proposed, and that's the only way she's going to be able to get this project completed.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding. I'll just wheel off of that a little bit. I'll note that the, the TIF amount on this project is about 10%, which is, is well within what's reasonable. It is related to tax increment, the use of tax increment financing. So I'll be supportive of this.
Thank you, Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I just want to commend our developer here, the owner of the property, for your persistence in seeing this through. It's an area of the, what we called for a while, Market West neighborhood, and it has great potential. And you're, you're one of the few people that's seen it and willing to invest. And I want to thank you for that. So pleased to support.
No further lights. There's no motion today, is there? Or is there? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. Should say second.
Oh, second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes, I'll leave for a minute and have to be retrained. I guess.
Item 42 is approved, six to zero. Item 43, a resolution to approve a settlement agreement for the case entitled City of Omaha versus Sanitarian Improvement District, number 392, and School District, number 17, Millard School District.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 43 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving second to approve item 43. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 43 is approved, six to zero. Item 44, a resolution to approve an inner local agreement with Sanitarian Improvement District, number 392, and School District, number 17, Millard School District.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 44 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public, public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding.
And the percentage is also within my district, too, in Elkhorn. But again, it's 11% on the tax increment financing, which, again, is well within the realm of reasonableness for a TIF project. And I'll be supportive of this when it comes to.
Fight at World 44.
I know, but I was so ready to talk. You threw me off when you left.
I knew you were going to blow, I knew you were going to blow me off.
I'm going to be approved at 44, and I'm counting on it.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 44. There are no further lights pending Mr. Harding wanting to say anything. So roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 44 is approved, six to zero. Item 45, an ordinance approving a redevelopment tax increment financing loan agreement with Grantee Enterprises LLC to implement the Jukes Ale Works and Brew Pub Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 20560 Elkhorn Drive, in an amount up to $259,850.
Public hearing and agenda, item number 45 is today. Proponents, please.
Mayhem.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding.
For the record, I'm, I'm red because I was at a soccer tournament all weekend with, outside, that's why. I, I'm fully supportive.